All right, I call the planning board meeting to order for May 2nd, 2024 at 6:00.
Is that echo going to be weird?
Probably. The first part of the agenda as we always have it, wait first before I get there. I'll introduce myself. Hi, I'm Stephanie Slush. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. Yes, John. We're trying to just avoid some feedback over here. Normally, yeah, there's no, usually no audio coming out of here. In the meantime, while John's looking to try to fix that. Hi, I'm Stephanie Slush. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. All the way to my far right, I have Doug Finn. To my immediate right, I have Jibby Tarr, alternate Chair. To my left, I have John Jeffress, and at the end, Lee Bell. And we have our Assistant Town Planner, Janelle Franklin, joining us virtually. Great. Yes, and the feedback's gone now, so thank you.
Are you there, Janelle?
Can you get off the mic and say? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. First item on the agenda, as always, is public forum. This is a time for folks to speak to things that are not on the agenda for tonight. So if there's something you want to bring forward to the attention of the board, now is the time to do so. If not, give it a moment. So everyone's here to speak to something on our agenda tonight. Great. All right, we will close public forum and move into formal discussion, which is a hearing to consider a special permit and site plan review for Western Earthworks LLC. The Hatfield Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, May 2nd, 2024 at 6:00 PM at Memorial Town Hall and by remote means via go-to meeting or dial in with an access code to consider an application for a special permit with site plan review by Jack Henderson, representing Western Earthworks LLC. Per Table of Uses, Section 3.5.27 of the bylaws, the applicant proposes to construct a single prefabricated metal building with storage yard to accommodate their commercial operations on tax parcel 206-142, known as 186 North Hatfield Road. The application is available to view in the Town Clerk's Office during regular business hours. All right. How public hearing works, now that the hearing is open, we will hear the applicant describe what their plan to do for the parcel. And then the way that we have to do it with public hearing is then we'll hear our comments from supporters. You address your comments to the board, not to the applicant. And then after we hear comments from supporters, any questions that you ask of us, we could then ask the applicant. And then we hear comments from opposing, folks who oppose the project. There's no like in-betweens, either you're commenting on supporting it or commenting on opposing it. Unfortunately, that's the way it's set up. And then after you make your comments, the board can then ask more questions of the applicant or of any supporter or opponent as necessary. Then we close the public hearing and the board deliberates and makes a decision whether it will vote to approve, deny, approve of conditions, or vote to continue the hearing if we need more information. Does everyone understand how that process works? Great. So now I will turn it over to the applicant, Western Earthworks LLC, to discuss their plans for 186 North Hatfield Road.
Thank you. I'm Jeff Spire with the Brookshire Design Group here on behalf of Jack Henderson and Western Earthworks. As you noted, looking at the parcel at 186 North Hatfield Road, which is the very north end of North Hatfield Road, where it joins up to West Street and actually dead ends just beyond their property. Industrial, industrial zone property, roughly three acres. There is an existing single-family home on the top of the parcel, the northern end of the parcel, with a large detached garage. The remainder of the property, the south, is primarily undeveloped. The applicant is seeking to, or requesting a special permit with site plan review, and I think there was a type under Section 5.27, it wasn't 3.527, that may have been our error. But it's the same use, construction industry and supply business. It's a new 7,500-square-foot building, metal building, again, in the north place, the northern end of the parcel to replace the existing barn and home.
One second, Jeff, sorry. You might, you can shift, so the public can see a little bit, because we have pictures as well, so. The phone and the camera can see it, and then the audience can see it a little bit better. Thank you. And feel free to move your chairs a little bit if you need to, if you'd like to see better.
I'll stand on this side.
Thank you.
So the new building replaces where the existing barn is, maintain the existing curb cut, its current location. There's a small five-car parking lot, has a handicap space and front for office staff, a small apron on the southern side of the building to facilitate access to the garage bays. But the remainder of the lot is primarily just gravel surfacing. We've got a chain, black chain link fence along North Hatfield Road, just for security purposes, with a gate at the curb cut. There's no new site lighting. It's really very sort of a minimal site plan. Their business is primarily a site construction business. It's not quite the same as Omastas who were here before you about a month ago. It's more for temporary storage of materials that they receive from large manufacturers before they then go out onto a job site somewhere. So it's really sort of a temporary holding yard for equipment and then any of the materials that they're using at their job sites. It's not for processing of gravel or storage of mulches and things like that. As you noted, there's no new site lighting proposed. This is primarily an operation that takes place in daylight hours, no need to light it. Stormwater management has been provided by way of raising the grade slightly to develop a grass swale along the east and west sides of the new gravel lot to, you know, again, shallow, wide storage area. On the southern part of the property, we've also got a similar situation in the northeast corner. Again, just to deal with runoff from the roof water and the gravel surfacing. That's all just going to be seeded and loaned and seeded to look very similar to what it does now. There'll be new sanitary or new water service, new electrical service to the building coming off of West Street and North Hatfield Road as appropriate. And there's new septic system designed for the rear of the building, currently in design by Cold Spring Environmental. Alan Weiss is doing that design. We did include traffic information. So, you know, as you probably know, we use the ITE standards as the sort of benchmark for determining the peak weekday and peak hour week trips. And there's always these subtle nuances, but this, this use fits into a category that's based on the number of employees. And with this particular business, they've got, you know, roughly seven people of the 30 or so employees that they have. There's roughly seven that will be at this facility. The rest all go to the job, directly to the job sites.
So primarily like office staff?
It's primarily office staff, some, you know, garage and maintenance staff. But primarily, the majority of the workers go to the employees, go directly to the job site, don't need to come here. There are occasional deliveries. So with respect to the traffic counts, the only numbers that ITE gives you is based on the number of employees. So this says that during a peak week, average daily trips would be 111. Peak hour trips during the weekday would be 24 trips in an hour. And again, that's based on employees, based on the number of people that actually use the facility. It's actually about half that, so 12 trips per hour is, you know, what we noted in the summary.
So based on the algorithm, just to, so based on the algorithm that you have to use to create traffic?
Yes. It produces a higher traffic count than is actually, you know.
And for this particular use?
For this use, right.
Okay.
And it's not uncommon with a lot of these ITE standards where, you know, certain businesses operate on a different, you know, function or different schedule than what the ITE assumes. And so, again, it's just the raw number of employees, whether they go to the job site or not, is sort of, you know, dismissed in the ITE numbers. But in this case, there aren't, there aren't many employees that visit here. So we'll maintain the same traffic patterns on North Hatfield Road. There should be very little impacts at that end of the roadway. As it does dead end to the north, there's still traffic and adequate turning radius to accommodate trucks in and out of the site and then back on the, on the West Street. So I don't think I have anything further. We are proposing screening, new vegetation, street trees along North Hatfield Road and to the south. But again, it's, you know, it's a large open site now and it will largely remain that way.
Do you have a sense of what type of materials will be stored there?
Jack Henderson could probably speak more to it, more specifically, but.
Please come on up, please.
Do you want me to stand?
Sit down here in front of this mic or stand in front of this mic, yeah. And please sign in, too.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I was waiting.
No, that's okay. Right up here.
I imagine it's a number of precast concrete structures, manholes, you know, pipe, concrete pipe, HDB pipe.
Right.
Yeah.
No asphalt?
I don't believe any asphalt.
Okay.
Cam, and please introduce yourself for the record also, Jeff.
Yeah. Jack Henderson Adams, owner of Western Earthworks. Addressing the question of materials stored on site. Typically, any large stockpiles of any sort of aggregate or organic material for any one project we're purchasing. We, we work remotely often, so we're purchasing that off-site. I would expect stockpiles to not ever exceed more than maybe 100 yards, which would be the equivalent of five.
Truckloads.
Yeah, truckloads of material. That material primarily would be stone or aggregate. For the next three years, we're performing emergency repairs for mass DOT and that requires us to carry some of those volumes.
Right.
There would be precast concrete structures, one or two of those at a time. And then we're going to have pipe, a lot of material that we carry off of any project and leave on a stockpile is stuff that we're removing from completed projects. But by no means with the yard the size, it would actually, it would not benefit us to be stockpiling material there in large volumes because of the lack of space.
And yeah, it says here that the deliveries that happen would, would be the 18-wheeler trucks, approximately three times per month on average, it's saying.
Yeah.
But maybe more during the summer and less in the winter?
Yes, it's hard to flex, or to give an accurate number on that. On a busy day for large commercial truck traffic, we could be demobilizing off of a site where we might have five trips in with the five trips out. On average, daily, you're not going to have more than two trucks in and out of there, which would be two combination vehicles at a time. And we're not a trucking company. That's not what we do, so.
Sounds good.
Is there more than you want? Yeah, I'd still sit here, yeah, but is there anything else you were going to talk about?
I didn't have anything more in my presentation, so I haven't had anything.
And what are your general hours of your business? I know that there's emergency stuff that could happen, too, but what is?
Yeah, general hours during the, you know, with construction, the working season is compressed to basically March to November, December. Typically, I would expect to see mechanics in there at 6:00 and out of there by 3:30 and 4:00. I think the only person that would be in and out of there regularly early and late is going to be myself and the other owner. And we try to respect those hours between that, more so for our employees. Hours for employees are 7:00 to 3:30, but 98% of our employees report directly to the job and no one starts the day at the shop. The shop would merely be an office and a repair facility for repairs on our own equipment.
I remember you explaining that the last time you were here.
Yep.
And that really makes a huge difference to the neighborhood.
Yeah, it would be easy to confuse us with like a mechanic shop operation, but we're, it's just a facility. It's like a home base.
And what kind of vehicle storage, like what size vehicles are you working with that will be parked there? Walking in and out of there?
Our largest pieces of equipment are ranging from 80 to 100,000 pounds. Our smallest pieces of equipment are maybe 10,000 pounds, so your average skid steer or mini. The larger equipment is going to be coming in there to be repaired. Those pieces of equipment, we don't hang on to very long. If that's going to be sitting there for six months, it's going to be sold. So that equipment has to be out there producing. It's not stuff that we would be keeping and storing on, on site.
And then you mentioned no lighting plan, so no like lighting up of the yard, the yard part or anything like that?
No, we would probably be anticipating having some decent lighting around the entrance and exits around the shop, primarily for any sort of personnel that had to report for an emergency repair.
Like motion activated or something like that?
Lighting inside the shop for pulling out highway signs and so on. I, I don't anticipate, unless we had some sort of reason or a security issue after, let's say, our first year, there's no intent of lighting the yard. If there was a reason and we had security reasons, then yes, we would pursue that and light that up regularly.
Yeah, but the plan says not, that there, there's no plans for excessive lighting, just on the building?
Yeah, excessive lighting for us is just going to be carrying a higher cost for the building. There's going to be irregular, there might be some decorative lights on the, on the face of the building, but nothing that's going to be there regularly.
Any questions from any of my fellow board members?
I'm really good with this.
Yep, done.
The great site grading makes sense. I'm a tiny little bit concerned, but only a tiny little bit concerned about the swale on the north side because it shows a drop of about three to four feet. Looks like where the building's going to be, that's going to be elevated two to three feet above existing grade.
Above that corner.
Yeah, above that corner. And so you drop down pretty quickly on the, along the north side. I'm assuming the area in the very northeast corner of the property is a swale for stormwater?
Yes, primarily for any of the runoff from that side of the roof.
Okay, you can alleviate my concerns by telling me that you're planning on catching the stormwater off the roof and putting it into a dry well?
It is, it will be shed across that into that swale, where it may, it may come out in a gutter, but the intent is to sheet flow it all into that swale.
Be left on the surface?
It will be left on the surface. We can put it in dry well, but that makes a difference. I think the issue is with the roof area, that dry well will fill up there very quickly, so we'll need to put that somewhere. I mean, that could be located in this swale, but I.
If I may just add to your concern, Doug, this, the area we're talking about is just historically sandy and has very little water problems, at least in that area, to my, to my knowledge.
We have a perk test done that, that would, that would help back that up.
Okay. The only other question I have is on sheet number LC 111. I commend the planting plan and appreciate the efforts to put screening in place along the front and the south. Is there a choice as to why you didn't put any screening along the north?
No, I think it was particularly just because of that swale. But there is certainly room for, you know, something, you know, something that doesn't block that, the function of that swale.
I think, I think we actually require it in our, as part of our bylaws because it's frankly an industrial zone. It's the way that it's adjacent to whatever that is.
Adjacent to a residence, yeah.
So, yeah, we, in our bylaws, it's, we ask for significant screening if it's.
Yeah, and I don't think it has to be as extensive as what you, because what you have along the front is tremendous. It's great, but it doesn't have to be that extensive. I mean, you know, basic, you know, eastern seeders are providing whatever, just anything to provide a little natural screening and also to help maybe catch some of the dust that might happen along the parking lot in the summertime. The only other thing is, I'm assuming that your building is not going to look like, like the picture that we saw. You're not going to have red horizontal stripes and stuff like that. Obviously, that's a structural design standard, corrugated steel siding, Butler's Butler Building. What color?
Our color selection was going to be black and gray. And the front was going to have, there'd be a veneer stone on the base with a wood frame entrance on the main entrance.
Okay, and the gray would be above the Wayne Scott and everything, okay. That's all I need. Thank you.
Any other questions from?
I'm good.
No, I, just from a landscaping background, I really like the way the front's screened along North Hatfield Road.
I like the use of this property, too. It's sat there for the entire time I've lived in Hatfield.
Right, and the footprint, that's going to, it's basically the same building.
Right.
Give or take, that's currently there.
Not a huge increase in.
And it's also important, I think, to say if it hasn't already, or if you, that the rest of the parcel is, is going to be gravel, basically, to store there. Any other questions before we hear from, yeah?
Through you to the other members of the board, does anyone else have a concern about the chain link fence along the front? Or are we confident that the screening is going to sort of diffuse the look of that?
We could, in past, past instances, we've asked to put like the green or put like the green or brown.
Plastic inserts?
Yeah.
No, I personally, it's pretty invisible. They're doing a heck of a job making it, hiding it. My personal thought is the black chain link behind a good screen is sharp, actually. I mean, I would prefer it to, to most other options.
No, I, I don't have that much of a problem with that at all. And I'm sorry, give me 20 seconds.
Oh, yep. Janelle?
I did have a question of why there were no spruce put in between those first two spots by the gate on the front of the property?
Probably the exist, the existing trees would be encroached upon.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, Norway spruce. Okay, so Norway spruce, somebody help me out. That's basically like a lobe or a tall bush evergreen, right? Or just a street tree?
I mean, they get, they get to be sizable trees, but it's a, you know, it's a healthy, healthy evergreen.
Okay.
I think for the screening of trees, was there a spec on, or certain species called now spruce?
We did put some species in there, yeah.
I guess I would ask on the screening for the planting, given the soil conditions and how dry it is, that we'd be open to picking a species that would be successful.
Understood. Yeah, yeah. No, that's totally fine. And yeah, knowing that, after looking at that, yeah, I have no problem with the chain link fence. It's fine.
Janelle, anything else on your end?
I did have one more question. I'm just thinking about if, I know it's infrequent, but when the 18-wheelers are coming to this property and there's a gate there, if by chance the gate is closed and there's no one there manning the gate and they can't enter it, what happens if they need to back up or something at the entrance? Is that something that they can do there? Because I know it looks like the abutters frequently have vehicles parked on the street behind that entrance. So I'm just curious if that came up at all or.
There's, there's a lot of room there, Janelle.
Has it been taken into consideration there?
I don't, I mean, there's a fair amount of space to be able to turn in before you actually hit the gate. So it would at least be, you know, mostly off-road. I expect that, you know, the tail end of the trailer may be sticking out.
Yeah, I think for, for what our purposes would be is any sort of off-hour truck traffic where the gate might be locked after 3:30, those drivers are going to be our drivers. If they're going to be hired drivers, which are, we only use hired drivers for off-hours for when they're delivering or picking up equipment, because we're always trying to have equipment on the job for seven or remove from the job, move to the next job at night. On those hours, ideally, that, that could be an electronic gate with a keypad. Some of the guys we work with, we tend to work with the same subs. And those guys, we, we will just flat out give a key so that they would have that. But it wouldn't be a benefit to us to have any of our equipment going there off-hours and not being able to get in the gate. And that would, that would be something that we wouldn't be having.
So you're managing against the likelihood of a truck coming up to a gate that they can't get through?
Yeah, and any sort of deliveries, oftentimes we'll have building materials delivered or grass seed delivered to our, our, our current location. They're going to be delivering during business hours. And the off-hour deliveries and truck traffic would be purely for equipment delivery, pickup or drop-off.
Okay, great. Thank you, Janelle. Any other questions before we hear from supporters and opponents of the project?
Good. Not for me.
All right. So also, there's a clipboard here up front. If you came in and haven't signed the clipboard, or if we just can move it by the door, actually, that might be for folks to make sure to sign in, for the record. Thank you. All right, so Jack, you might be excused because if anyone has to come and.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jack.
All right, so now it is time, as I mentioned before, we only have opportunity for people to come and speak in support or to come and speak in opposition to the project. So comments from supporters first will be entertained. If you're in support of this project and would like to make comments to the board about the project, have any questions, please come down to this front seat here and address the board. Now is the time. All right. Now, comments from opponents of the project will be entertained. If anyone would like to make comments in opposition to this project, please come down and speak.
Hi. Hi, Virginia Martel, direct abutter to the north of the property. I have several concerns with the project. Some of them were voiced, one of them being the stormwater swale on the north side of the property. We receive a lot of flooding lately. Our house is always wet and damp. So that is a concern, that there's going to first be a new building structure, 7,500 square feet in size, and then also an impervious gravel layer across almost three acres.
Impervious?
Impervious. Mass DEP seems to be changing their definitions on what's impervious and pervious, but that raises a lot of concerns for my house specifically. So while I appreciate that there is a stormwater swale there, my other neighbors on the other side have had a recent pond in the backyard for two months and my house has been flooded since November. So this raises a concern for me. The noise and kind of visible mitigation on the north side, where they, there's no planting on that side, is something also that I would be concerned with. Right now, you know, we're looking at an old schoolhouse. It's a little dilapidated, but we knew that moving into it. And seeing that change into a large industrial structure on that side on top, in what is like a predominantly residential neighborhood. We have the cemetery across the street. And while there are some businesses located further up, they're not on top of my doorstep. And now I'm speaking from my house only and not for the other abutters. So at a minimum, we would like to see some sort of barrier put there if it were agreeable to the tenants. Noise reduction, we already see the gravel, the yard that's a couple blocks up from the Keter building. We can hear every beep and truck that comes in and out of that place all day. So now having that on our doorstep is also something that we're concerned about. The traffic implications for it, constantly have people in our driveway turning around because they missed the sign to North Hatfield Road. We have CNS people pull over in front of our yard because they've missed it two miles down the road. We can't have those types of trucks pulling into our driveway all the time. We have children, not, we don't have children, we have children that come visit us. We have lots of nieces and nephews. I just don't want that kind of, you know, traffic and implication in our front yard. And then as far as, those are pretty much the, the like big picture items, which I think that have, have all been kind of discussed and put out front here. I know that in the application, they said that there was going to be some sort of security lighting. I just would like to confirm that that security lighting isn't something that's going to be blaring directly into our front house all night or anything like that. We've seen issues with other properties where they just, they have bad systems and then it's totally disruptive to the neighborhood. So those are my main concerns that I would like to just throw out. And I, I just can't see having, taking this area that has residents in it and neighborhood in it and kids in it and putting this big fabricated industrial building there. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Only on that property, industrial?
I mean, it's popped in the middle.
But I get it. I know that.
Yeah, so is there any of that that we want to, or any other opponents, first of all, to the project I would like to speak? If, if not, then, uh, yeah, I think responding to some of these concerns from the abutter directly to the north, um, is, I'd like to hear from, uh, Jack again, and, and Jeff, Jeff on some of this.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, do you wanna start on some, on some of those?
Yeah, I don't think we have any issue, um, with additional plantings on the north side. I certainly, you know, who knows that our part is, is part of the zoning requirement, but I don't have any issue with, you know, some, some of the screening on that, on that north side. Insofar as the swale goes, um, you know, it's a, it's really a function of what's required by mass stormwater standards and any new projects. It's really, as you know before, it's the same, really the same impervious area building-wise that is there now. And all of that roof area, it's, it's sort of a gabled roof on, on both of, and all that's going in that direction now, you know, it cheap flows and does what it does. We're not really increasing that roof area at all, and, you know, putting it into a swale that at least manages it. I completely recognize that, um, groundwater is higher lately, we've been in, been getting, um, you know, extraordinary rainfall. But as you know, these, these are really sandy soils, at least based on all the tests that we did. So, um, you know, that's a pretty good indication that there's seemingly some capacity for that, um, that, you know, soil to take, take a fair amount of water. So there, you know, there, there may be monitoring in certain periods during super heavy storms or wet seasons, but it's, you know, all managed in accordance with, um, state and local standards at least.
Can you speak to the watertightness of the gravel lot?
Um, it, it, I mean, it, it will remain, um, a gravel surface, it does have some imperviousness to it. But it is, um, it is largely, um, you know, as if you've seen gravel in their roads, you do get runoff during high-volume storms. But, um, for, you know, for the, for the everyday storms, they do, still do absorb a fair amount of, you know, a fair amount of water. It's tough to make those 100% impervious. You know, they are, they are much more impervious than a, you know, lawn or, you know, something similar.
But it's not blacktop?
But it's not blacktop, and again, the, the, um, runoff and infiltration numbers that we need to use for the stormwater calculations all take into account the, you know, the, the imperviousness of, of gravel compared to, you know, soil or other surfaces. So, it, it has been accounted for. So it's, you know, we do recognize that there is some level of imperviousness to it though.
And this is just related to us talking about updating our stormwater management pieces of our bylaws to make them a little bit, go a little bit above and beyond what is just generally required by that. But that's not the way they are right now, so.
Deal with it what it is.
And I, I think the other cons- major concern that I heard was, was lighting, um, and I think that he spoke to that a little bit, um, maybe you.
Yeah, let's just put a pin in that, are you guys not gonna light it up at night? Say not gonna light it up at night?
Yeah, please come up, yep.
In regards to the, the lighting, we're just like everyone else in this room that's looking to keep track of our own electricity bill. We have no intent to be spending anything more on electricity than we need to. Uh, the yard being fenced in would be the first measure of security, and in the event that we had any sort of extreme measures of, of, uh, theft, that we would be doing something where it would be motion-sensitive only. Um, in regards to the noise, for what we do, this location kind of piqued our interest because we thought there was a great spot to set up against, uh, a railroad that runs through there. And the time and noise that the railroad's gonna produce is gonna be far more than anything that we would during regular business hours.
Does the beeping trucks, is that a legitimate, like, do your trucks have backup?
Yeah, the beeping would be minimal because the way that the lot is designed, we tried to respect the same footprint that was there with the existing building. The trucks coming in with the way that the flare is at the road entrance and the space at the front of the shop, that all of the trucks for safety are designed to pull in forward where there's limited backing of.
It's a big circle.
The, the backup alarms, uh, when we're talking maybe two to three trucks, uh, a day at night is gonna be minimal, but this is not an operation where we're running in and out of here on a daily basis, multiple loads, multiple trucks, multiple truck traffic. Um, and I think there was a concern with, um, the truck traffic for trucks that miss CNS. If I speak on a personal level with that, that the over-the-road truckers that we deal with on a regular basis that are delivering some of our materials are far different than some of the skilled drivers that are driving permitted loads that are over 100,000 pounds over multiple states. I have no intent, as those types of truck drivers just get in the way of our own operation, and if there was an opportunity to put signage up there to keep those guys out of there, our spot and location would, would not be a, an option for anyone to be turning around or, or, or dealing with.
And if anyone finds that being the case, they can reach out to the Hatfield Police.
Put a sign up. Just put a sign up, no trucks turning.
I mean, there already is a sign, but I mean closer, by his area, yeah. Um, I'll, I mean, you say that there's not lighting, but I, I mean, I feel like, is it fair to say, are you gonna have a si- a sign that says Earthworks Construction that's gonna be lit up?
We're really looking for, um, a place to call home, to move our business from Florence to a town that's a lot more accepting. As far as our kind of notoriety and advertising, a lot of that happens with the work we do, and we don't feel like a big need to be putting up a billboard out in front of this building.
So no lit-up sign?
No.
And could any lights on the building itself be sconced down?
Yeah, we'd be open to any sort of suggestion.
I mean, to me, that, that's shielded, sconced, sconced down.
Yeah.
And that really cuts down on any type of, um, flaring of that light to the neighbors.
That's a potential condition that we could always put as part of that.
We'd feel the need for, for some lighting at all the entrances.
For sure.
For sure.
Doors.
For sure.
But as far as anything beyond that, I don't see a need for it.
Um, I have a question, um, for the opponent, who's, or the abutter, I should say. You mentioned having some sort of barrier to, to not having to stay, view that, um, building. They're talking, if we have screening there, would it be preferred to have be vegetative screening? Would you prefer, would, would a fence be something you'd rather look? Like, I'm just curious, what would make it more amenable for that?
I, I mean, I think vegetative screening would be the preferred option, just to kind of give us back a little bit of, you know, the, the trees and everything there, we're kind of used to out there. Not that there's a lot of vegeta- not a lot of trees there now, but there's a difference between when you have a house as a neighbor versus, you know, one of the buffer buildings, so.
Yeah, I understand. And, you know, it's, I'm, I mean, it's, it's zoned industrial and.
Sounds like Western's not opposed strongly to that, right?
No, I, I, I think our end goal here is to take a property that's been abandoned, dilapidated, and is currently a hazard for its residents. If any child found itself into that building, the likelihood of injury is extremely high. And we're looking to improve the property with some subtle changes, uh, and a building and landscaping that would, um, basically come in, you know, the, the town and what the town is, is looking for.
So some screening on the north end is completely, yes, something that, with vegetative screening, that would be preferred? And, yeah?
I don't mean to belay it, and I'm being sensitive of the time, and so I'll ask the question, if you can't answer it in a minute or less, that's fine. When we're talking about a drainage swale in the northeast corner, can you very, very briefly describe how that is constructed? How will it be designed so that it can capture the bulk of the stormwater that is likely to shed off the north side of that roof and prevent or keep stormwater from pooling on the surface?
So, there are a couple of different strategies. One, um, is the overland flow, the heat flow, you know, trying to concentrate it into a pipe, so, you know, there's more surface area for that water to infiltrate as it comes across.
Right.
That, you know, that swale, that broad swale, you know, collects water from one end to the other, it has enough pitch to convey the water, but that's also a large, you know, lawn, grassed area that, you know, also absorbs the water. During larger storms, there's a small, you know, settling basin at the end, there's a larger, flat, you know, basin, again, for these large storm events. If that does, and it's, you know, we've gotta calculate this to the 100-year storm plus, um, if that does overflow, we've directed the grading so that it gets into the, the channel next to the, adjacent to the railroad. And so, you know, it looks like a lot of grading, but it's really just, you know, forcing the water in a certain direction so that it, you know, follows where it, you know, where, where it is ultimately gonna exit the property. But by keeping it all vegetated over, you know, very porous sandy materials, um, that's, you know, the best thing we can do for stormwater as opposed to a, you know, big tank in the ground, which I don't.
Right, and I wouldn't even, I wouldn't like a tank in the ground either, so, yeah, no, fair enough.
Thank you.
You good?
Uh, any, yeah, any other questions from the board? Janelle, do you have any comments or questions?
Um, I just wanna make sure, I know that it was mentioned at the last meeting, and I think someone commented on it, but I can't recall what it was, uh, what was said about the, um, fire suppression needs for the building. If the, um, water department decides to X that, um, pipe on the back of the property? Have you talked to, you've talked to fire, I'm assuming?
We're in the process of working through the interior, uh, engineering of the fire suppression, um, and also going through some of our interior layout for the workspace and the garage bays. We have not talked to the fire department at this time.
Okay. I just, um, yeah, that was my only concern.
Okay, that's not.
Uh, Doug? Yeah?
Um, you're doing mechanical work in the garage?
Uh, yes, we would.
Where's the compressor?
Um, we have yet to lay out that location, but our compressor is, uh, it's only a five horsepower.
Okay. But it'll be isolated sound-wise from, so it's not gonna create sound outside the building?
Yeah.
Okay.
The workspace and, and the, the layout next to one of the bays is basically engineering that and insulating that, because at the same time, for noise, we're also anticipating of having six offices.
Understood.
So the noise in the, in the garage is gonna have to be insulated from the work that's gonna take place in the office.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
No other questions, thank you.
That's a good question.
Be in the audience.
Yeah?
I have the same fire suppression question.
Okay. Thank you. Alright. Any other questions of the applicant? Otherwise, I can, uh, close, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
What timeframe are we talking about for this question?
So if we were to vote hypothetically to prove this tonight, there's, uh.
Twenty-day appeal period.
Twenty-day appeal period from when we filed our decision, and we have up to 14 days to file that decision. So, the earliest.
It's in a month.
Is around, yeah, give or take a month from our end.
Right.
And then to get the go-ahead.
Uh, we would not anticipate breaking ground until we had a finalized plan that was approved with.
You're ready to go if you had said plan in 45 days.
Yeah, we would, we would be ready to go. And, and our hopes is that we would be able to call this home by the winter time.
That'd be great.
Alright. Any other questions of the applicant, or otherwise we will move, can I get a motion to move, close the public hearing?
Motion to move the, close the public hearing?
Second.
Uh, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed. Now it's time for the board to deliberate amongst themselves.
In anticipation of shortcutting this, I'd like to make a motion that the project be approved with, uh, conditions, those conditions to include all exterior lighting to be da- shielded and downward-facing to the greatest extent possible, unless building code otherwise requires it. And that, um, uh, a screening plan be developed and submitted to the planning board for the record that shows, um... I wanna say tiered, that's not correct, but, um, uh, sufficient natural screening along the north boundary to provide, uh, visual, um, screening from the, uh, abutting properties. Sorry, were you writing all that down?
I second, I second that motion, you hit it.
Okay.
Any discussion? The only thing that maybe I would consider is asking them to put some sort of signage up about truck traffic or something like that, but other than that, I, that's fine, we can do that.
Everybody good?
Vote. We have a motion in a second.
And that I was discussing, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, alright. This is approved with those said conditions. Um, we will be in touch and let you know when we file that and everything, so.
Thanks for choosing Hatfield to come to.
Thanks for helping us out.
And, yeah, and, um.
Thank you to the abutter for coming too.
Really, really.
Appreciate that.
Good concerns, and we appreciate it.
Right.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's a challenge when it's an industrial site, piece of property, um, surrounded by, is it rural residential, and it's the nature of our zoning map right now, so.
I mean, it is, it's an industrial lot.
It is, yep.
Yeah.
Yes, John?
Just to, uh, reiterate the gentleman's, um, business, if it's 186 West Street, then all the truckers will know 186 West Street. I've lived at North Hatfield Road for 45 years, and CNS came in, the town, not saying what board, what department, or anything like that, made a distinction of 95 North Hatfield Road for a business, truck traffic. You have trucks still coming down North Hatfield Road, all enders, all other enders town, you know, with various signs on the street corners, now the CNS entrance, I mentioned the name, okay? But it's like, if this board and its zoning laws and regulations and everything specifically says 186 West Street, then all truck traffic should go, go to that designated spot. Now, the person behind the wheel, that's another story. And it's like, how they operate, this owner should, you know, be concerned about drivers, but that's another issue. And it's just like, speed, concerns, and things of that nature. Assistant said 18-wheelers, they're not triaxle trailers, triaxle tractors, a lot of wheels are turning, and goes the speed. We have our town police setting up signs saying, you know, what the speed for the specific section of the town is, it's 35, keep it at 35. But it's the person behind the wheel, that's the one GPS can tell him to go somewhere in the middle of potato field, probably, that's where they would wind up.
Yep.
That's happened, but it's like.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's not really.
Boards here are saying it's 186 West Street, and all the loads should go there.
Yep.
I know what the person's saying, um, 35 and 10, truck stop, turn around, I've had them turn around in my corner for a long, long time.
Yeah, I understand that there, we, we all, if, you, the jurisdiction is the police department, and then our building, our zoning enforcement officers, who you need to contact with that stuff, because it's related to them not following their permit, uh, and educating. So, I, we can't do anything about that right now. So I just wanna let everyone know that's who you need to contact, to, because if enough people keep bringing this up, then they'll have to address it. And so it's something that we hear peripherally, but we ca- it's the zoning enforcement officer's purview, if it's related to their, to that, and I wish we could do more on that end, but that's not our, it's not our jurisdiction. So, we have other stuff on the agenda tonight. Thank you so much. Thanks, Jack, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff.
The next item on the agenda is a site plan review for, uh, what is currently Zero West Street. It's a proposed pickleball and tennis facility. And with that, um, because it's a site plan review, it means it doesn't go through as much of a rigorous, uh, not rigorous, it's still rigorous, but not through the same process as a special permit process. It's a site plan review is a little, um, less extensive. And so what we'll have here is applicant share, um, plans for the parcel, and we'll have some questions here, and if anybody in from the audience has any comments or questions, please direct them to the board.
Is there gonna be another hearing after tonight?
Related to this project? This project does not need a public hearing. This is a site plan review only, and so that's all it needs with, um, because it's, uh, in a business zone, and, uh, this, what their usage is in a business zone only requires site plan review according to our bylaws.
Getting a building that's bigger than the auditorium at Smith and Caffey, also you're getting, uh, a parcel that's, uh, been agriculture for so long, so just wanted to say that right up front.
I know, it's, we're, we have, we're stuck with the zoning map, we have its own business, anything that is approved in the business zone can be built in a business zone. And so, we would like to, well, well, let's have, let's hear if the applicants have to, have to propose before we entertain comments from a public, thank you.
Especially opposing comments.
Alright, go ahead. And also please. All right, go ahead, and also please introduce yourselves.
Uh, so I'm Jeff Spire again from Berkshire Design Group here on behalf of, uh, Ashley Schaefer and Vetro. Um, uh, as you noted, looking at the property at Zero West Street, which is a roughly eight point eight, one acre business zone parcel. Um, it abuts, um, ninety-one to the west and Route five and ten, uh, West Street on east. Um, just turning the plan a little bit because it's just oriented, ninety-one's on the north, um, on this, or the top of this sheet, north is to my, uh, to my right, facing this way. Uh, West Street is on the bottom. Um, as you know, it's largely a, uh, an open agricultural field. Um, there's a handful of commercial businesses, um, some residential homes around. Um, but, um, it's just primarily an open, um, an open field. Uh, the request is to seek site plan approval under section four point two two for amusement, uh, recreation service. As you know, it's a, um, indoor tennis, uh, facility, indoor tennis and pickleball facility. Um, it would also include locker rooms, um, there's a snack bar, um, pro shop, um, some gathering space. There's no intention of, uh, food preparation on site, so there's no, there'd be no kitchen. Um, there's a small outdoor patio space for, um, for use during, um, you know, the, the nicer weather. Um, you know, there may be an occasional food truck or something. Um, but again, that wouldn't be, um, you know, something that, that would be served out of their own kitchen. Um, there's a parking lot for, two parking lots, really for, um, sixty-five cars. There's a smaller lot on the southern end of the property, a larger one, um, directly in front of the building. Both of those are proposed to be constructed of porous asphalt. Um, so that is one of our, uh, keys where stormwater management elements on this particular project is that all of those lots are, um, built with porous asphalt, um, which, you know, it's, it's amazing, um, how well that stuff works. And so that manages, you know, all of the stormwater from at least the parking lots, some of the roof water. We do have a regular asphalt, um, aisle proposed on the southerly curb cut just because of the truck traffic, the dumpsters in that location, service vehicles. Um, the second curb cut, um, is proposed further to the north. There is, um, in addition to the porous asphalt, there's a large sort of linear rain garden landscape, uh, feature proposed between the parking lot and, and West Street. Um, that includes a number of plantings, and there's also a, um, a large shallow basin in the back of the building, uh, abutting ninety-one to handle, um, the additional roof water. You know, a, a second future phase, um, is in, you know, it proposed, um, with some outdoor courts. I don't know how quickly that second phase would come to fruition. We have anticipated some stormwater area, um, and detention surface to, to handle that additional, those additional court areas, but the initial construction really is, is for the indoor courts and the, um, and parking area, get that established and, um, and see how that, you know, how, how successful that is. Again, traffic-related, um, numbers, this is another sort of funny one. Um, so they, they, the IT standards, um, that we use to reference for this particular project are either by the square foot, um, or by the number of courts. And there's a big difference between those two numbers. I don't know why, you know, why it is. So, um, average daily trips based on square footage, um, is about twenty-five trips. Um, when you do it by the number of courts, it's two hundred and twenty trips. It's quite a big difference. I, you know, oftentimes with these sort of niche uses, the, there aren't a lot of samples that the IT standards can reference, so there's this wide range of numbers sometimes. Um, peak hourly trips, um, are twenty-four per square foot or, uh, thirty based on, uh, the number of courts. Um, but again, I, I, the, there's, there's some anomalies with those numbers, so, um, you know, take them for granted. So, but there's, there's a parking lot for sixty-five cars. I think the highest turnover points are going to be when, you know, there's the, the court times, um, games are, you know, switching over for, for a new, um, if you're a new group or new, um, you know, team, whatever it may be. And so there's going to be a number of people leaving, a number of people coming, and then, you know, they'll be there for a while. What else? We did include a site lighting plan, um, the site lighting plan that's included, included these courts as being, um, conceptualized as part of the first phase. It was a slightly larger building, there was no lighting in the back. Um, so the lighting really, you know, was irrelevant in the back, and the parking lot was slightly enlarged in that lighting plan. So all of that has just gotten condensed, the same number of fixtures, um, within this, within this parking area. What you noticed, and I think in that lighting plan, is that there's an extra row of parking on that exit drive, um, that arcs over that isn't, isn't going to be there or lit. So, um, everything is really contained within these, these two parking lots and this, this one on the south side. Um, there'll be some, um, lighting at the entry door, we are proposing a, a ground sign at the northern entrance that would have, um, downlit lights. And, um, what else? Is there anything else I'm missing that you would like to add? I think you've done a good job.
Okay.
Um, Dan, um, from, uh, Tom Duff's Architects can speak more to the building. Um, there's a small, you know, concrete foyer that would contain a lot of the, you know, more built-out facilities. Um, the, the roof structure and, um, form of the larger, uh, larger building structure that covers the courts is, um, you know, more akin to what you'd see in an athletic facility. Um, it's a, um, I don't know how you'd describe the fabric, but, um,
It's like a PVC vinyl smooth fabric, virtually indistinguishable, indistinguishable from a metal building. Pretty standard, um, exterior aesthetic. You see the drawings printed, a, a bit faint here, I apologize for that, but, um, this would be the street elevation here, you've got, um, thirty-five feet at the ridge, and, uh, the building is, uh, four hundred and ten long by hundred and thirty-six wide, with about, uh, uh, one foot bump out at the entrance. Looks, looks very much like a, what you would call a, a building, you know, a metal building.
This is a peak roof going both ways?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think I have anything further, I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions?
Only how long it takes to build this.
That's a good question, I don't know.
Yeah, uh, about two months.
Two months?
To
That include, that includes
From the foundation to the building being fully enclosed.
Right, how about site work?
Site work's probably four months.
Um, phase two, you're not sure when that would be? Only, I only ask because if
Yeah, yeah, that's a pie in the sky.
Okay.
Everything is, you know,
Contention on this working?
Yes, yes.
Might as well get the approvals up front if you can, right?
That's, that's what we were told.
This is in which zone again?
Business.
Business zone. You have on the plan the elevation of the roof ridge, but that's above the mean finish grade? Um, what is the roof ridge above the, the, um, average beam grade, uh, in place now?
Um, sorry, I don't, I, the intent is to, the building will be thirty-five feet.
It's pretty flat there.
Thirty-five feet from the grade currently?
Um, we, we will be regrading around the building, um,
Understand, thirty-five feet from the grade as currently there?
No, it's, the grades will be changing around the building. I don't know, I have to look at the grading plan to tell you what.
It, it looks as though you're elevating the grade, uh, probably five to six feet coming up to the edges of the building, so that the entrances are sort of cut out, basically cut into that, uh, that swale that goes up to the foundation of the building.
Yeah, so that was one way, uh, one way to look at it was to, to berm up and have it be essentially flat now. Another way would be to drop the, the slab essentially, uh, of the building to lower that entrance. But we'll keep it at, at the zone requirement of thirty-five feet to the top of the ridge, either way.
At the maximum.
Whether that's to the existing mean or the proposed mean.
That's the maximum height you can get.
Yeah.
Okay, thirty-five, that's the limit.
That's what the limit is, yeah.
Yep.
Um, did you do a calculation of lot coverage?
Uh, I realized you did not do that. I noticed it was seventy, it's seventy percent for this district.
Uh, um,
I realized it, I
Is it town water at that site, or is there town water at that site? There's town water, so maximum lot coverage is actually sixty percent. So I think you're probably going to meet that without too much difficulty, okay?
I'm certainly happy to provide that calculation.
My only other concern is just the, the look of the building, it's monolith. It's a couple of nice windows in the front, but otherwise it's big corrugated steel, swale, that sort of thing. Maybe that could get broken up by landscaping, but I don't know.
Well, we could also, you can have it colored, and say
Yeah. Just want to remember, that is a star district up there, it's really a hundred percent a star district. In that way.
Yeah, that is, we did notify those relevant committees to reply back if they had comments on it.
We just got this two days ago, right?
Yeah, and so I also have slight concerns about the misread, the misreading of, um, the process for this, because the way that this is reads in this, in here, and I apologize to the applicants on this, that it says that we, although we don't have to have a public hearing, we should notify the abutters and of its determination. But the, to me, I, the way we read it was, oh, we notify the abutters of our determination, but it says, why do they do the same, in the same sentence? I think we still needed to notify the abutters. And then, and then make a determination, and so, so that's something that I have a question about. Of if we needed to actually notify the, Janelle, can you take a look at that?
Yeah.
It's section five point five point six. Which makes me think we may have to do this again potentially, but we have sixty-five days of filing to approve this, and we would
Five point five point six?
Yeah.
Any regular meeting, public hearing should not be required, it would be any board's issue.
The way, it should be two separate sentences, the way that it's
Yeah, it really should be, yeah.
Because my interpretation of this, because we did not notify the abutters, because site plan review is, falls different criteria. And the way that we were interpreting it is that we notify them after the termination, but the way that it reads in here, it makes it seem like we should notify the abutters before the site plan review.
Our bylaws, yeah, our bylaws say, um, a public hearing shall not be required, however, the planning board shall notify all abutters within three hundred feet of the application property and shall make its determination within sixty-five days of filing.
Yep.
So, I believe we need to do mailings.
And do this again next meeting?
No, that, what she read then says. And also
The way that it's phrased is very confusing. Sorry, we're doing this, yeah.
Somebody's got a question.
Um, yes.
Isn't it that sixty-five days prior to your vote to approve this or not?
Oh, no, we have sixty-five days from when someone files to vote on this.
But after, you haven't notified the abutters. So, can we vote for that?
We're talking about this right now as a board, related to that, yes.
Yeah.
It is interesting, so because this is a site plan review, there's not, like, it doesn't have to be fourteen days prior, so I don't know, I think there's some flexibility in how you handle this, like, if, if sent out notifications and no one makes a comment, then
I think it's pretty clear. You don't have to have a public hearing, you have to notify all abutters. And you have sixty-five days to make your determination. So it's pretty clear.
Back and notify abutters.
Right? Or it doesn't say you have to notify them beforehand. You have to notify them within sixty-five days of the filing. So we're well within that.
Are you comfortable with making a decision knowing that some of the abutters have not been notified?
We're not even talking about making a decision yet. We're talking about when do we have to notify a butters.
My opinion is we need to step back and notify the, the butters just
Definitely notify the butters, but that doesn't necessarily mean we can't stop talking about it. You know, that's a, that's a known, we have to do that. Don't have to stop reviewing the plan because we haven't done
You're done, do you want to take a look at it?
Can we vote on it, though, is a question.
Five point six.
It's just like a nuanced thing.
A public hearing shall not be required, however, the planning board should notify others.
Apologies for this.
Now, boo?
Yeah, it says we have to do the two things within sixty-five days.
It doesn't say, it doesn't say in what order. And we can notify the butters up to sixty-four days.
I guess, I guess my, my point is that I'm, I'm a little bit uncomfortable just with the pushback from a butters not, not getting notified prior to this. I mean, it seems to me, it seems to me that the spirit of the way it's written is that the abutters would, would be informed about what's going on.
Yep, absolutely.
You know, before
There's no should, we must.
That's, that's my, that's my thought on it.
Yet, the previous phrase is, there's no public hearing. So this is purely information for the butters.
So to me, this says we have two months to deal with this. At the end of two months, we have to have a second meeting, and we have to have previously informed all of the abutters.
We, we have sixty-five days to make the decision. Sixty-six days in, the applicant can file for constructive approval with the town clerk and bypass the planning board.
But I suspect we're going to have it done longer than that.
The way that this works, though, so, I'm just trying to think how we can work this out and that. So we have the applicant here, they're presenting, they present it, do we want, I don't think we'd have to necessarily have them do it all over again. We can still notify the abutters, tell them in the notification that they can watch this meeting, and then come to our next meeting when we will vote and take more comment into consideration, does that sound right?
Perhaps we can, perhaps we can finish the site, the site presentation, table it until the next, until, until the next meeting, inform the abutters, give them the opportunity tonight and at our next meeting to address concerns about the project.
Right, and watch, and inform them that they can always watch
I think we could, I think we could just run roughshod over the, over their concerns, but we, but that's not the way we do things.
No.
Right. Okay, sorry, are you, has it, people been following along? Have you been following along? Okay, so the way that it's phrased in, in our bylaws, you know, good old, our good old, old bylaws, is not, um, it basically says we have to notify you, but it doesn't have and so, in the spirit of wanting to notify the abutters, even though it's not clear, we're going to keep going with this presentation. We're going to notify the abutters but not choose to not vote on this until our next meeting, so that the butters can then come with any concerns, we'll let them know that they can watch this presentation, um, and come and look at the materials and stuff between now and then, and the next
And also people that are in support of this, this project too.
Right.
Right here, right now, yeah.
Yep, exactly, um, and so, with that
Does that make sense to you?
Yeah.
Fair, yep, okay, glad we're working
And our apologies for the confusion.
Yes, I wanted to make sure that we're doing this, that we're doing this right anyway. Um, okay.
You know, it's a matter of fairness, you know, the size of this project's huge compared to, you had a master last week
Can you just say your name for the record?
John Wilk Sr., uh, and you, he also had Hinchcliffe or Jack tonight. Smaller projects, this is, you know, this, compared to the earlier project, this prod building's ten times, ten times bigger than the seventy-five hundred one there you guys are putting up on, on Polish property. So there should be more dialogue and more time to talk about it, so.
We dragged a master through a year and a half of hurdles. This is my second planning meeting, it'll probably be my last, because I'm right across from this atrocity. And, uh, did not be notified even.
You will be notified.
I'm sorry?
You will be notified.
Yeah.
Are we
That I'm here, John happened to know.
The only way, the only way I knew about, Stephanie sent, uh, me an email, all right? And I didn't know, and I thought it was about the, you know, the Polish property, but, uh, and Janelle too. Uh, but we met the owners yesterday afternoon, we were taken by surprise. And not, not anything against the owners, but they have to feel how we felt, just, you know, such short notice on such a huge project.
Yeah, they've come to the board, come before the board, mm, two or three times before, and yes, I, to, to kind of introduce themselves and stuff, and so I introduce themselves and stuff, and so I understand that, and the fact that there's not a particular public hearing process for this particular project does, you know, might, might make folks feel that way, but I think we're doing the right thing by notifying the butters going forward and doing you know, the right thing, the spirit behind of what's in our bylaws. I will, I, I want to go back to the presentation piece, though, for now, if that's okay, and finish that piece up before we, we take any more comments right now from the public. Any more pieces that you wanted to present?
I don't think so from our end.
Does the board have any questions to the applicant?
Yeah, quick question. In this packet, I'm looking at sheet SL one.
The bright lighting?
What does this have to do with this project?
Like I said, that was, that was when there was this slightly larger building, there was a tail on the back of this, and this parking lot wasn't large, it's the same site.
Got it.
And so they didn't reproduce the plan, it was simply eliminating a number of light fixtures on
So the, so the L extending to the west that's shown on this plan was eliminated?
Yes. Yeah.
And the L extending to the east pointing downward on the sheet that you've got right there is shorter than what's on the photometric plan that I'm looking at?
Probably shorter than
Yeah, okay. All right, I understand now.
Effectively stayed, yeah.
And actually, yeah, this parking lot was a lot larger.
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough. Um, we also don't have a landscaping plan, right?
Uh, there should be one in the sunset.
I saw something.
Am I missing it? You got a plan related to the box of court service?
I know.
Okay.
I apologize. I can deliver those tomorrow, but those are, yeah, we have them.
You can see the ghost of it on SL one.
Yeah, we do, we do have very fully developed planning plan. I apologize for that.
Let's see, some stuff in here, some stuff in here. Yeah.
Number, number of street trees along the front in the rain garden, the front is pretty heavily planted. But I will certainly, yeah, I apologize for that omission.
And what's the, also the lot coverage?
Coverage, yeah, I've got a note to include that whole.
The placement of the rain garden, I guess it's in the southwest side behind the building?
This one, yeah.
Is that, was that location specifically chosen for a reason?
Uh, mostly because it was directed toward this low area, that culvert's underneath ninety-one and that, that drainage shed.
Okay.
And I think just because it was mostly hidden from, you know, it's, it's not gonna be a deep, you know, ugly basin, but just to not put it right out in front of public view, so it's behind the building, it's you know, backed up, backed up against, against ninety-one, so it was sort of, you know.
Okay. The reason I ask is because it seems like that would be the only obstruction if, if there was a desire to move the structure itself farther back on the lot, that rain garden is the only structure that's in place that would prevent that from happening.
And we could certainly, that's pretty valuable, so we get that, you know, there's a certain surface area that we need to provide, so we can make that, you know, if the building wants to move back a little bit, we can certainly play with that.
The back part of that parcel, though, is a, an overlay district, the water
Oh, the watershed?
Watershed overlay district, so some of that might come into play if we
Not being able to move that far back.
Yes. It's like literally around like the edges of the back part of the parcel. Which restricts, will limit some.
No, understood, there's only so much you can go with, okay.
But we do, we do have some flexibility with that basis stuff.
What color is the roof supposed to be?
Um, I believe it's white, off-white.
Yeah, light gray.
I just, if I could make a comment, I just sent over to you, Jeff and Ashley, the Hatfield Design Guidelines, and I think when we have a butters comes the next meeting, I think the design of the building is gonna be something that comes up just because it's so large and not a lot of like appealing elements of it to look at. So we have a section in our design guidelines that is specifically for large residential retail service or industrial structures, and I encourage maybe some changes to the exterior in preparation for that, for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Um, any questions, otherwise we can hear some, from some comments from the audience, from the public? All right, with that, thank you.
Four.
Yeah, we are, we're just saying thank you to the applicants, so that folks can come to the microphone, so we want to make sure that
Come on, John, stick with the process, please.
That's not, that's not the way we have to do that. People can come up and speak anywhere, freely, neutrally, however, comments that they want to make, but please address them to the board.
I don't have too much to say.
Yep.
But I'm just concerned, probably disappear. The water swelling to the northwest corner. You know, that's where the phase two, and that has, will have the most impact on our family, is phase two, the outside pickleball and tennis courts. We're concerned about that because of the noise factor and also the hours of operation of something like that on the outside. Inside, I'm not so concerned with, I don't care really about the building myself, but you know, it's just the outside's noise factors and also any drainage that would, you know, as it a butter, would go through our property.
Okay, yep.
We've heard in the past about the noise from a pickleball court outside behind the condos in the center of town, which is why that got completely squashed. So the noise is a factor. Inside the building, not a factor. Outside the building, potentially definitely a factor. The bonk, 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 bonk back and forth all day. Depends on what time at night, if there are the lights for night games, are there, you know, people that can play till dark on, on summer nights?
Yeah.
I mean, hours of operation would be very important for the neighborhood to deal with any potential noise factors.
Right, you don't have any public lighting for any of your athletic fields here in, in, you know, publicly owned property. I wouldn't want to see it, you know, going out to private people just to put up outside lighting courts, because you, you start a whole new trend, so.
Yeah, well, part of my question around, like, well, when is phase two? Because legally, and, well, for permit, I imagine it would be similar for a site planner review. You have five years to build the plans as is, otherwise you have to come back before the board. So that's kind of why, even though state in this, if you go to the state, that's actually three years legally, our bylaws conflict with the state. So you have three, five years to act within whatever you approve. So that's kind of why I was asking, like, if this isn't getting built in five years, they have to come back before us anyway, with phase two. So that's kind of why I was asking around that, because it would be helpful to know, like, what actually is gonna be happening immediately versus
Just to clarify, this whole project approved as it's presented tonight, that would include the outside, you know, a lot of schematics and things we've seen would include the outside courts, so.
Right.
Um, unless we choose not to.
Unless we choose not to, right.
Don't think we're gonna approve it tonight, though.
I wonder if we could issue a permit for the inside and leave the outside for a future permitting process.
Yeah, that's something we can always consider.
Something we've done before, is this, you had that as a condition of the permit, that they do go to construct it, then you can come back to you to deal with any of the concerns.
So I guess my question is to the potential client, if you were not be able to build the outdoor things, would you still be willing to build the indoor things?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Again, the outdoor is you know, kind of a best case scenario down the road and
But your project is not
Main focus is the indoor.
Right, so your project isn't contingent yet on the outdoor?
Yeah.
Right, but we also, we completely understand the sound problem and the lighting problem. And yeah, we, we want to get along.
Just some clarification, I'm sorry, I'm new to town, I don't know you. Where are you in relation to this proposed project?
On the north border.
Okay, so you're the house immediately to the northwest?
Second one over it, but our property, I believe, a butts it on the back, it's a triangle.
Yep.
Neighbors, so.
Understood, okay. Okay, thanks.
Any other comments, John? Otherwise, we can have other people come forward. Thank you.
Might if I flip your paper back a little?
Oh, no.
Effective vegetated version.
Imagine.
Ed Melonowski. I live here, and this is my house here. Fourth generation on the farm. And this is an unbelievable project to learn about secondhand without any notification. When we were kids, our swimming hole was right there. The Mill River tracked right through here, and then when ninety-one came through in sixty-one, sixty-two, they rechanneled the river for about two miles west of the southbound lane. This entire area is on the Bekomtuk Path. There needs to be an archaeological survey taken before one shovel of dirt gets moved here. And that's based solely on the Karpetsky study, which happened two miles north of here. It's all on the same, same trail, right through this property. And I had multiple questions, I don't even know where to begin. I mean, this, the, the, the traffic flow in this court location is right at the end of my driveway. I have concern about lighting. The other house right here, same thing, the curb cuts right there. Thankfully, I, I was here for the O Maston thing, where it was an innocuous, small project and, you know, very, very nitpicked by the whole board, and this thing seems to be just getting bull goes through. I just, it's, it's, I don't understand how this can happen. Thank you.
You will be notified as in the butter. We're legally obliged. We weren't planning on voting on this project before butters are noted.
Are there any federal funds subsidizing this project?
No.
No. Okay.
Um, any other comments from anyone in that? Yes, please make your way up to the microphone, please.
Hi, Helena Wels, I resided to seven seven West Street. In June of twenty twenty-three, we received, my husband and I, John, communication from Berkshire Design Group, from Timothy Armstrong, the survey manager. And I said, this is great. He reached out to us, I reached back to him, I spoke with him, he was gracious. But he also understood that he couldn't answer my questions, so he referred me to Jeffrey Squire, and on June thirteenth, I left a message on his machine, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, and I never heard back, so not gracious. But let's move on. Thank you for the information that I finally did receive about, from the information about Berkshire Design Group dated April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Under the existing site section, the last statement is, existing traffic is assumed to be minimal or non-existent. Has anyone not been on West Street?
It was referenced in the specific site.
No one drives on that lot, right?
No one comes on to or off of the site as it exists now?
Okay, thank you. It said existing, okay, all right. Under the expected traffic increase at site section, you cite the Institute of Transportation Engineers, ITE, land use code four four one racket and tennis club, and average daily trips ADT for analysis of only weekday traffic. Did any of these references include CNS trucks?
ITE doesn't reference private.
Why, why would they include CNS trucks?
Because CNS trucks, many of them exit from CNS heading north. Many of the CNS trucks who get off of ninety-one either dismiss or they miss the entrance, so they head north on the north corridor. So that impacts the, the travel.
Yeah, but it's non sequitur to this site, is our point. It's non-sequitur to this site and the, and the traffic that this site generates, which is what we're discussing.
If there's an issue with CNS traffic, you need to contact the North Hatfield Police and deal with the zoning.
And thank you, I know that's a repeat, and I understand, but they do, CNS trucks impact traffic on five and ten. So we can't ignore that they behave and they enter where they're supposed to. So the fact that these trucks do head south, and I would not try, you know, contact police because there's an erroneous driver who's not really doing anything other than
The only way that we can help remedy this, these concerns that come to the board, to us regularly, is you have to contact the Hatfield Police, and you have to talk to zoning enforcement officers.
And the CNS traffic has absolutely no bearing on this project.
I beg to differ.
Well, CNS traffic is gonna be there anyways. CNS traffic is gonna be what it is. Given that that's the, the state of affairs right now, this project does not impact CNS traffic, and CNS traffic doesn't necessarily impact this project, except to maybe make it once in a while a little harder to get in and out of it because of the traffic on, on the road.
Exactly.
But it does not impact this project.
And again, I beg to differ. I'm a resident at two seven seven West Street.
But the thing is, those trucks are going up and down their roads, every single one of those roads, irrespective of this project. They're already doing it. They come by my house. Okay, so, but that has no bearing on this project.
Again, you can call the police to
Yeah, I have.
To make them aware of the problem.
If, if I may, the document that you're looking at that was provided by Berkshire Design Group was only attempting to analyze new traffic that may be generated as a result of the construction. It didn't mean to say that existing traffic was X and this would provide, it just speaks to new potential traffic trips.
Thank you, and I understand that.
Okay.
As in a butter of zero West Street, I'm against this project. Because I know that it will increase traffic, and let me continue, please. The follow-up, there is the reality of the CNS trucks, which you're dismissing, and I understand why. When will the weekend traffic analysis information be provided? You provided the weekday.
Interestingly enough, ITE does not provide weekend trip numbers, which was surprising to us as well.
Does, does Mastot provide counts that, for weekend traffic, or is, is it limited?
I mean, it's the, the ITE tracks trip generation for particular uses. And so it's, the IT standards
Right.
are used to inform the traffic volumes on DOT roads. DOT doesn't necessarily estimate traffic usage from particular uses, they do for roadways.
Well, I guess that's what I was saying, is ITE is basically how you can sort of predict what a, what a use will generate on a, on a given road.
Right.
What I'm wondering is whether or not there are traffic counts as they exist right now for the road as it exists.
There may be traffic counts available on that section of West Street. And one thing we could certainly look is see if that information is available. I don't know if it is, DOT doesn't always have records, but we can certainly look. And they will, you know, they will, they will establish a level of service for that roadway, so that it ranges from A to F. And so, you know, it's, it's based on the number of vehicles, and so one thing we can do is insert this traffic generation into that, into those numbers if they have any, to see what it does, and that's, you know, that ultimately is what dictates, you know, traffic lights, stop signs, is, is those numbers.
The reason I bring it up, and kind of to your point, is if we're talking about two hundred twenty-one new trips per day, if you're talking about on King Street, where I live, that's crazy. If you're talking about on West Street, if that has nine thousand traffic cars going by that point right now, two hundred twenty-one is a very small increase in, in the grand scheme of things. I don't know, I don't have the context, so I have no way to, to judge. There's a way to get those traffic counts, it'd be great.
Yeah, to see the percentage increase. Yeah.
That will, that will clarify what's old and what's new.
And I didn't mean to, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Please.
Under the peak hour trips section, what are their specific peak hours that you foresee?
I don't know as though whether it specifies generally their morning, you know, hours, eight to nine eight to nine, or evening is, you know, four to six. I don't know if IT got that specific with, with this use. Again, it's, you know, we've got a standard that we, that we use for these calculations, as does any traffic engineer, and we're bound by whatever data they have.
Well, there's a stipulation, projected peak hours, so that comes from somewhere at that...
You would assume that they would tell you what that peak hour is. So I can certainly, we usually will specify that if it tells us, but it may not, it may not, it may be just a very generalized peak hour.
Related to that, too, I would like to see the proposed, I know you might not be thinking about this yet, but proposed hours of the, of the facility would also be helpful, I think, for the, for thinking about lighting and things.
And, and to the, the point, the final paragraph does note that the, according to the IT manual, the, the site is expected to generate a maximum of 31 trips per hour during the heaviest peak periods, or one vehicle roughly every two minutes. Right? Okay.
And that's my, why my question is germane to the peak hours. We should know when they are because maybe some of us would avoid going out. Because this big, this really impacts our lives because we do utilize the 5 and 10. We have to because we exit and enter our, our home. And it just really does influence our lifestyle, especially if there are evening outside games. Do you know the anticipated hours of operation? Especially for outdoor activities?
Again, the outdoor, we haven't thought too far ahead because it's kind of...
Not happening yet.
Hypothetical at this point. But seven to eight in, in the morning is a typical start time for a facility like this. Nine to 10 in the evening is a typical ending time. We would base it on how, what the demand is. We're starting, closing at 10 and six months in, where all the courts are empty, we're not going to pay people to stay there and keep the lights on.
Yeah, it's better to be, you know, go with what you would want to ask for, for hours, as opposed to say it's only, you're going to go open till seven and then come back to us and ask to want it to be nine, so.
And thank you. And based on interest, if there's a potential of even 9 to 10 PM, that concerns me again for sleeping purposes, part of our lifestyle. I would definitely, I'm just opposed to this, hearing this. Under the evaluation section, you state in the last, uh, last two, no, the second to the last sentence, the additional traffic generated by the proposed project will result in an incremental increase in traffic volumes on West Street. And then it continues, and will have minimal impact on traffic operations. To me, that's a contradiction. I'm not sure of the clarity of that statement.
I think the comment about your, during peak hours, it's estimated that there's 30 vehicle trips, which equates to one vehicle entering or exiting every two minutes. So on a road like 5 and 10 with the capacity and design speed that it has, one additional vehicle trip on a, you know, every two minutes is going to be a negligible difference. It's, you know, it's, it's not even going to be noticed on the, you know, on the larger traffic evaluation, you know, scales. So that's, you know, but we could certainly quantify that before, but that's essentially what, you know, high, high-traffic projects generate, you know, multiple trips per minute. You know, it's, it's, it's like a grocery store or something. This is not, people come play for an hour and then leave, or more. Yeah. So it's, you know, it's, it's, it's not intended to be a, you know, a fast food restaurant. It's, people come here, park, and they'll be there for a number of hours and then leave.
My next question was about the outdoor lighting, especially facing our north side of the house.
Yeah, so there's no, there's no lights proposed for the outdoor courts, you know, if, if those were ever developed. We've got all, you know, we've got a minimal number of poles, you know, sightlights, just a light of parking lot. You know, there may be eight, but they're all, they're all dark side compliant, you know, fully shielded.
Turned off after.
No, they would, they would be, yeah, they would be on a timer. Yeah, and turn off when the business, when the business closes.
But the gentleman mentioned that 9 to 10 PM might be the potential time for outdoor.
Sure.
So wouldn't there be lights if they're playing outside?
That was just of the business. That's the hours of, potential hours of the business. That doesn't necessarily mean, yeah, it would be...
But they might play.
If it's not, if they want to play in the dark, maybe.
I'm pretty sure they're not proposing outdoor courts at this time.
Right.
Right.
They, they could be proposed in the future, but for right now...
And that would be a future meeting and a future permit.
So potentially, if we decide it that way.
Right.
So when you vote on this, whenever you do within the timeframe that you mentioned before, you're voting on just this first phase, or are you also voting on the exterior?
Currently, it's the whole plan.
It's the whole plan.
We were discussing tonight, possibly just permitting the building and the parking lot, and then talking about making them come back for another round of the outdoor. Since the, the outdoor courts are more of a, we'd like to, we hope to. Doesn't necessarily...
The applicants express it as a pipe dream at this point.
We don't necessarily have to review that right now. But the way the plan is in front of us is the whole thing.
But, so I have a legitimate concern. If the whole plan is being considered by each member, then outdoor recreation is part of that plan. Okay, so lighting is, is a big problem.
They've said they don't plan to light those.
There is no lighting proposed.
There's no lighting proposed, except in the parking lot.
Play while the sun's up or get off the court.
So, but he did allude to the potential of playing 9 to 10 at night.
Right, there's an inside.
That's the indoor courts.
What would be the, the deadline or the ending of outside play?
Daylight?
That would depend on daylight.
Dusk, yeah.
Yeah.
Which goes till nine in the summertime.
That's, it sounds like we would have to come back and discuss.
Potentially.
Lots of things.
Potentially.
Has there been an environment, environmental impact study conducted on this property?
It, goes to the, if you mean like, it goes to the Conservation Commission if they come within 100-foot or 200-foot buffer wetlands, which most projects tend to avoid that so they don't have to, so they don't have to go to the Conservation Commission. So with that, they, it's not necessary for this project along, considering the wetlands piece.
Okay. And the aesthetics of the building, will, will there be a fence surrounding this at all?
I mean, I think they legally have to around with 91, is that true or no? But I know that there is a fence currently there.
There's a fence along this, yeah.
It's still part of the project that...
But there's nothing in the front or around the parts.
How about on the north side, which is where we are impacted most?
No.
Through you, following up on that, is there any plans to remove any of the existing vegetation along the north boundary?
No, not currently.
Is that a mixture of species and ages of trees, bushes, shrubs, understory?
It is predominantly deciduous, but it is a range of, yeah, understory, some ground cover.
And if I'm standing on the field in the center of the frontmost outdoor court, looking directly north, can I see the neighbor's property looking through those trees in the middle of the winter?
Potentially, sure. I mean, it's, you know, with bare trees, I mean, there's, there's a distance there, but sure, you can see structures.
So, but in the middle of the winter, you're not going to be playing outside? No, that's true. In the middle of the summer, is it thick enough so it provides visual screening?
It's pretty, pretty thick in there.
Does someone live there?
In that house that's immediately next to it?
Yes, someone resides. You, you're going to reach out to that, a butter.
Yep.
All the butters, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the public? We'd like to try to keep them brief also. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Julie Pokala. I live at 31 King Street. Apparently, we're neighbors. I'm the person who organizes pickleball in Hatfield. And so, and I'm the person whose project got squashed because of some...
Was that intended to be a pun?
Ah, no, but it's a good one. First, just in terms of concerns about, about traffic. We have 100 people that play pickleball at the elementary school on Sundays, and I don't think anybody on Main Street has noticed the traffic because of it. And it's very limited in time, so people might, generally pickleball players play for an hour and a half to two hours. And they might, they come in like in the 15-minute time period before their time comes in. So it's not like there's constant traffic that you have to worry about, oh, it's a peak hour, I can't get out of my house. It's just very limited in terms of when the traffic is of people coming and going. Pickleball is just incredibly popular, and there's a need for indoor spaces. Right now, people in Hatfield who are playing are, are going elsewhere around either Hampton County or over to Bay Road Tennis Club to play. It'd be great to be able to have that in town. In addition, I think it'd be great for Hatfield in terms of drawing people into this town. People from North Hampton are, are going to Bay Road Tennis Club to play. This would be much more convenient for them. I know the people that come to play at the elementary school on Sunday are going to the convenience store. I know they're going to the various restaurants in town. It has an economic impact of having pickleball in this community. And I know this project would do the same thing. You know, people play a game and then they want to go out and have a beer together. They want to go get pizza. It's definitely going to be positive in terms of people's image of Hatfield and in terms of businesses around Hatfield. It's, it'll draw people and it'll be good for the town.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments from public? Yep.
I apologize for being late. I was playing pickleball. It took me 25 minutes to get there.
Clearly, you're strongly opposed to this plan.
But I'm Sue Mormon, 30 Bridge Street. I'm so excited about this project, I can hardly stand it. Pickleball, in terms of the community that it has, that I've seen it foster in people, and in terms of the friendships and relationships that develop as a result of it, remarkable. So I hope it happens. I do think it would be great for Hatfield. I know there are, you can't pick up a pickleball magazine these days without noticing all the technology that's going into making a soundproof ball.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sue.
I just learned that there are pickleball magazines.
There you go. The ball, what, magazines?
Yeah. Any other comments from the public, either here or virtually? Oh, yep.
John Kostick, 2 Nolan Circle. This is amazing to have an indoor tennis facility, pickleball facility in the town of Hatfield. I've worked for the USTA, United States Tennis Association. And the growth of both of these sports is phenomenal. We talk about an economic impact on these, in the community, in traffic. I, I've worked in tennis for 35 years. I've worked with a lot of indoor facilities that have indoor courts, outdoor courts. And the impact on the community in an economic standpoint is, it's good. It's great. Like, I think someone referenced earlier, a lot of people play, they go out to restaurants, they go out to have a drink. And to have a facility like this in this community, a healthy lifestyle activity, tennis, you can play your entire life, pickleball, you can play your entire life. And just from a USTA standpoint, the way it would drive people to come to this community, not just to play tennis, but to use some of our other resources. And then there was something about traffic. Someone mentioned before, the elementary school and all the pickleball players go there, and you hardly notice the traffic. It would probably be the same with this facility. You would hardly notice any additional traffic. So I just want to say, like, it's, we should support something like this for our community. To add something like this would be a phenomenal resource, not only for Hatfield, but for the surrounding communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments? I feel like most people who are here have spoken. With that, I think we all agree that there's some stuff that we need from you anyway, related to what I've written down, lot coverage plan, landscape plan, looking into the design of the building in relation to our design guidelines, getting a little clearer, you know, spelling out the hours that, that, you know, you're kind of like, maybe, but we would like to probably see that written down, what the proposed hours are.
Landscaping, lighting.
Yep. They, lighting they already had.
Can you address, give butters concerns, curb cuts directly across? Are you moving on those driveway locations? Are they set?
No, we've obviously got to go through Mastot for highway access permit, so that...
That was going to be my question.
We'd like to help. We'd like to help.
Sure.
Be nice if we can move away from houses.
Whatever we can do to, you know, separate, we can certainly move, yeah, one or both of them, some to alleviate.
Yeah, that was kind of my biggest concern, was that driveway coming directly out.
Right out.
Melonowski's.
House.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's going to be hitting, everybody coming out is going to be hitting directly.
Both curb cuts. Is there, was there a design process where you showed a single entrance?
I think primarily for emergency access, we need, will need two.
Is there, is there like a one-way, like an entrance in one way and an exit in a different way? Is there, have you thought maybe looking that way?
Actually do that. Yeah.
It'd be interesting to see a variation on that. Yeah. With a one-way in, one-way out, right?
Right.
Where, where the out comes...
Not facing somebody's house.
Not facing somebody's driveway, or distance away from somebody's driveway.
Or you make a, this is the entrance and the exit's a different way?
Yeah. Either, either or, but trying to reduce the potential conflicts, yeah.
Yeah, some ways to alleviate those concerns, sure.
Just so everybody knows, we're not trying to ram this through. Don't think that we are. We're not trying to ram this through. This is going to go through the same nitpicking process that everything else goes through here, and we're not going to let it slide. So for neighbors that are concerned that we're just fast-tracking this project, not happening. It's not happening that way. For you guys, I'm sorry if you think that it's going to transpire in a day or two, but it's going to take some time. This is a big project for a small town, and we're going to nitpick every bit of it so that no one can be obnoxious about it later.
We're going to fairly, we're going to fairly assess the project. Fairly assess the project and it, it's in everybody's best interest to make sure that, you know, the concern, the legitimate concerns that are being raised are addressed.
We are, we are here for the concerns of the town.
Yes, and if, and it follows a slightly different process than what's come to us most recently. And so that's what might be a little confusing to people, too, is it's, it's a different process than a public hearing process, which is also a piece of that. The other piece that I didn't, the weekend trips thing, I don't know if I mentioned that.
DOT, reach out to DOT.
Current traffic counts, yeah.
Trying to see like what percentage increase of the traffic on that road would be, would be helpful, I think.
Yeah, 230, like, no, like I said, if, if you've got a traffic count of 11,000 vehicles per day, then 230 additional is...
Especially on a route five.
Puts it into context, I'll at least save that.
Is there anything else that we would want for our next meeting on this?
I mean, I'd like to see the landscape design.
Yes.
We got that, we registered that one.
I think you had it.
Okay.
Hands raised.
Oh, yes, our, our meeting is always the first Wednesday of the month, so it'll be June, except for this one. June, whatever, let me pull it, nope.
June 5th.
Thank you.
June 5th is June.
Oh, right, we're looking at Wednesday now.
June 5th at 6 o'clock. Yep.
Done.
Mentioning Ted Melonowski's concern about historic venue, is there any?
Yeah, that's up to the Historic Commission to bring that forward to us and then with their opinions on some of that, I think. And the way that historic districts currently are in town, there's not a lot of teeth to them. And so I know that that is something the Historic Commission is looking at ways to add more teeth to the historic districts, but currently, the way it is right now, there's some limitations on what, what can be done, is my understanding.
Yeah, we, we butted into that, we butted that, into that over at Benson's a little bit. Everybody, everybody was screaming about the historic district, but it really doesn't have any teeth.
Unfortunately, yeah.
The Historic, the Historic Society, the Historic Commission really has to chase it hard.
But by giving this another month, that also gives the Historic Commission a little bit of time to review the plan and offer commentary, so.
And, yeah, and I don't think we were, couldn't, clearly with the stuff that we're asking for, we wouldn't have voted tonight on anything anyway. So we need to make a motion to continue this?
Go ahead. I make a motion to table this until our next meeting.
Or continue.
To continue this until our next meeting and, um, with the, with the stipulation that we inform all the butters appropriately and then revisit this at our next meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so we'll see you all at our next meeting with more information. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody for coming. Good things take time. Good things take time.
Yes.
Right. Things take, right. And I meant that when I said we're not ramming this through.
No, without, without...
We have a couple a little more things on the agenda, so if folks want to continue their conversations outside of...
Yo!
Excuse me, if you'd like to continue your conversations outside, we still have a couple of things on our agenda. Thank you. Alright, uh, the next piece on the agenda are these two wonderful flyers that are sitting in your folders. Janelle has helped draft these. Thank you so much, Janelle.
Find them now.
Uh, yeah, they're buried in the packets. Um, we're, basically we have, uh, on Tuesday, the 7th, they're, they have to be submitted to the town clerk and town moderator for approval, because anything we give there needs to be approved. So, any feedback or anything related to this? I imagine there might be concerns or maybe some possible language tweaking, but not necessarily edits on the substantial pieces.
These are clean and clear. They hit the high points. I think they'll work really well.
They help me understand.
Are they also, I, the only...
That's good.
Wondering is, you know, is it too jargony or, we're going to be up there explaining it. So if we walk through people, through the jargon on here, because there is some jargon.
Maybe some of the acronyms. I mean, did I see, I don't know, I suppose once you describe...
Let's go one at a time. Which one you want to go, the color one or the black and white one?
Self-explanatory, I guess. I'm not, yeah.
They explain. First time.
That's self-explanatory, never mind.
First time they say it, they call it.
Yeah, that's right.
Looking at the open space development bylaw one, I mean, the picture's like, it's helpful when you like stare at it, but you might need, we might need to walk people through what that picture is. I also think I want, where it says key changes, no frontage requirements, lots will still have to meet Title V, I would also like to say, and setback requirements, because I think...
Yeah.
Yep, agreed.
Um, I wanted to add, just because, so these flyers were out in Town Hall, and then some people were asking questions about them. Um, and something that came up, I, I don't know if maybe the photos for the ADUs are misleading, if like less is more with the photos, if people agree with that. Um, I was thinking of taking some of them off, just because some of them do look more like glorified tiny houses than like...
Keep the garage one.
Yeah, and, and the, the one...
The big one here.
The big one is fine. The, the two on the smaller ones on the left and right.
Should have had a picture of my house.
There you go.
Actually.
Uh, but is it for detached? This is for...
Oh, this is only for detached, okay.
I say keep the garage one and the, the one that you have that's the big one.
And the big one?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, frankly, someone could put a tiny home in. That's like with us. What are you defining?
Strictly speaking, a tiny home is a trailer and not a permanent structure, so.
A permanent structure that is tiny.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I got yield spelled wrong at the bottom here. That's about it.
Yep.
No! I before E, except after C.
Or they, or we, you don't want to go through that, or V.
Where are we?
Only other thing too that like might be confusing to people is the square...
I will change that.
Is just using the square footage, right? Because I'm like, what is square footage to an acre? I don't know how much square footage my own personal lot is, for example, but like...
Four, five, 60.
I don't, that's my only other feedback, is people are going to be like, well, what is 60,000 square feet? So we have to be ready with just that answer. We don't, maybe don't need to...
About one and a quarter acres.
Not a boy.
One and a third acres.
And then 30,000 square feet is like point six eight.
Uh, yeah, three-quarters of an acre.
Shy by point oh two.
Where?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Um, that's what I would want one, but also like, I feel like, I have mixed feelings about the restrictions, but baby steps, right?
Baby steps.
Um, and then the other piece that I think we need to have an answer to, Janelle, that, do you mind finding the answer to this? Lots will still have to meet Title V regulations. People, I'm sure someone's going to ask a town meeting, well, what size is that then? So if we could find out from the Board of Health, what is the regulation?
You need to get to those weeds. It's like you have to follow this law.
Right, but I think it makes people think like, oh, no, are they going to be...
We're not the Board of Health. It's like, you got to follow the Board of Health law.
We can, we can simplify. Lots still have to meet, um, septic system.
No, I'm saying, we can keep this here, but I think having the answer ready at town meeting is going to be, is, is...
So the answer is...
It's the easiest solution.
Right.
It's health, yeah. We just got to get...
Yeah, we can sit and butt back and say it's not our department, or we just answer the question.
What's the question?
The question is, if someone asks, it says, no frontage, people are just going to try and think like, oh, I can have this tiny house and this tiny lot, blah, blah, blah. Like, what is the Title V regulations? So what is this, what is the size?
We need two sentences in our holster, ready.
Right. An answer. If someone from town asks, what is the size lot that is the smallest size lot required for that? And so we can just ask the Board of Health.
Small size lot required for...
For a septic system.
Yeah, and if anyone else has some ideas of like, questions you anticipate getting, if we can brainstorm those and I can, we can prepare for them better, um, that's good too.
Okay.
The, the expectation is that you're not going to add an ADU unless you have an existing dwelling on the property.
That's the open space.
Oh, the open space. I'm sorry. Okay.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Janelle, you got your red pen out?
I got my blue pen.
How about that? Uh, I'm on an open space. The Hatfield Planning Board proposes updates rather than is proposing some.
Yep.
Let's make it active. We are propos, the Hatfield Planning Board proposes updates.
There you go.
Yep.
And then take out the hopes that, in hopes that it will, just replace it with the word "to", "to incentivize more contact development and preserve open space." This bylaw will help create more affordable homes.
Sustained.
So take out "can", replace it with "will". And then the last sentence, "by updating", "in updating this bylaw", I suggest "by updating this bylaw", it's clearer. And then take out the word "newly", newly dedicated open space. Just...
Dedicated.
Just open space.
Dedicated. On the dedicated open space.
Future small farms that would be able to operate on the...
And then the yield at the bottom of the bullets.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Someone else at one of our public hearing on this was like, well, can someone say which parcels would be affected by this? And the answer is basically, potentially any parcel that's around three acres or larger.
Should we want to put that in a bullet?
No, but we'll have that ready to ask if we're in a question.
Oh, no, it's here, right here. Oh, no, no, these are just examples. Doesn't have the limit.
What parcels would be affected? Any potential parcel with three acres or more. Well, how many is that? It's more than just the area size. It's how it's developed. It's whether there's water or wastewater available on the site or whether a septic system would be required. We can't provide a definitive answer to that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, but start with the idea of three acres or more.
Got to think.
Could entertain something like this.
Yeah.
What are the big questions opponents are going to have? That's what you got to be in front of.
They don't want to...
There's going to be a lot of opponent questions.
They're going to say that the lot size, like, the, we have lot, we have lot sizes for a reason, and we shouldn't be, that's going to be the feedback.
And everyone's going to put a chicken coop in their backyard now, you know, have rent.
But then I, my counter argument would be, most, I would say, most of the houses, at least in this downtown area, do not have 200 feet of frontage. And I don't mean downtown, like Main Street, like, within any of the houses that were built before the 80s, most of them, unless they're farmhouses, do not even have 200 feet of frontage. And I think everybody is aware that, um, housing is out of control with housing costs and that we need more affordable options, and this is one attempt to get that.
Does this mean we're going to get a whole bunch of new development and tiny lot subdivisions?
You're going to ruin my property.
The, the response would be, no, because all of this still requires review. It doesn't allow anything by right. And the planning board, you have to trust that the planning board isn't going to approve something that's going to be detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood.
And to preserve 50% of the potentially developed land.
Are we going to see the character and the landscape of Hatfield change with an increased density in our population in the residential areas would be the biggest question I would think, would be on people's minds.
And I would be like, either, if someone wants to develop a piece, their parcel, let's parcel it, these parcels. And regardless if someone wants to develop it, they're going to develop it. It's either going to be a cul-de-sac with...
McMansions.
With acre-sized lots, probably $700,000 plus homes.
Our answer to that would be, our attempt on this is to preserve as much land as possible in perpetuity.
And still protect, and still protect the interest of the landowner who wants to develop.
Which would answer the question as to saving the landscape and fabric of the town.
Mm-hmm. It's, it's the counterbalance of protect, of protecting the character in town.
Well, incident in motion, it's going to happen.
I clearly see the potential for the property behind my house being developed. If not the whole thing, at least up to the set of trees that are in the middle of the property.
Oh, yeah, don't doubt it, yeah.
Right behind my house. They've thought about putting a solar farm in there. That got shot down. But I think that with the right developer, that could be an asset to this town on that property, not taking all the farm.
And that is literally in your backyard.
That is literally in my backyard. Now I'm willing to accept that in my backyard for the good of the town.
And knowing that half of it still would be preserved.
Half of it would be preserved, and the other thing is that there's still, the parcel's going to be divided. The parts, new, this parcel would have to be divided, because I think they're going to still keep the part on the west side of the house where, uh...
But we can't talk, we don't, yeah.
But he's, he's a good anecdotal, um, resource if we get into that discussion, you know? The, the, there is going to be this not in my backyard kind of, I don't want this sort of density.
And we're going to have to just, we're also going to have to justify this. You know, we're going to have to justify somebody that says, well, I don't want that there because they're too small. The houses are too small, the lots are too small.
I, I would rather have one neighbor in my backyard instead of three.
Right, right. But the thing is that we have no affordable housing in this town.
Not that this would necessarily make affordable housing.
And that's, that's the thing to be very clear about, is we're not talking about subsidized housing complexes.
Right.
We're talking about preservation of open space. This is not to create new subsidized housing.
The motivation.
Preservation of open space.
There's a lot of people that don't think about creating affordable housing in this town.
Yeah.
They do not think that's something we should...
Right.
We act, we give you an extra lot if you do, do, uh, make one of them affordable.
We're helping the developers.
Yep.
And the lot's going to be developed.
But it's only one, so... So, yeah, I think, and I, this also, I'm going to, both of these things actually are going to be outcomes of our comprehensive plan, our master plan. That's going to come before us probably in August to vote on, so get your reading glasses on. It's at least 237 pages.
Oh, my God.
Hey!
You guys have, we don't have, we don't meet in July, but that means you'll be doing a lot of reading in July. Take it to the beach. And so in that though, both of these are recommended updates. Like, we're already ahead of the game, already doing, like, and so hopefully, members from the Comprehensive Plan Committee, which represent people from across boards and committees in this town, will come and speak in support of this as well at town meeting. I'm hoping for that.
With the open space development bylaw, we got to lean heavily into the open space part of it.
Yes.
Yeah, serious.
Yep, and we all can go up and talk and, and, you know, I'll, I'll, I usually do the, the chair does the initial, like, talking through of what this is.
Yep.
And then you all are welcome to come up and add your commentary, um, based on what the public comment is.
I don't think that we should be blindly thinking that no one's going to develop these properties.
Right, I think it's sticking your head in the ground and hoping.
So let's think about this in the manner that if there are places, like the fields behind my house, if we can get half of it saved, it's got to be 30 acres back there, I'll bet. If we get half of it saved and let half of it go to, to, um, planned development, then maybe it would be an asset to the town as opposed to, uh, you know, people saying, I don't want another house, bad, another house, you know? We went through it when they wanted to put something behind there. And, um, I can't remember the lawyer's name. It came from Springfield and represented us, and it was a big fiasco.
Mm-hmm. Yep. So, yeah, we'll, we'll see how the cookie crumbles. But the other thing, I think the other thing to lean on is, this already is on the books in our bylaws. That's another piece. It's actually increasing the amount that we preserve. It's increased, like, it's moving from...
This is a modification to an existing...
This is, yes.
That's fine.
Yep, both of these frankly are.
Yeah, fair enough.
So that's the other thing I think we need to lean on too, is it's not new.
Slight modification to improve existing bylaws.
And make it...
Rather than just only attach, we let your kids scoot it away.
And same with this, too.
We're going to preserve more land, give you a bigger bonus.
Yep.
For the developer.
Yeah, we, there's no bonuses in our current one.
And with the ADU, it's, it's, it's trying to open doors to allow individual property owners to develop their property as they see fit.
Yeah, we're giving people more choice.
Age in place, get some rent, let your kids take over the house. All these options are open.
Or create a space and rent it to a graduate student or whatever to create income.
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, Janelle, do you have any other updates? I think we're, uh, a little, besides this being our, your last meeting.
This is, yeah, so that, I guess, is my big update. I am, um, moving to Philadelphia, so I will not be around anymore.
Congrats.
I have really enjoyed this experience of working with all of you for the past year. This is a really great experience for someone like me who's getting, um, my start in regional planning. And, uh, the position has been posted, and I'm hoping that it is filled soon, but you are in good hands. We have Lori now helping out as, um, the admin assistant, so she'll be helping out the planning board. I don't think, I haven't heard her, is she there?
Yeah, she started on, like, oh, she's not here. No, no, no. The, so, the other piece is...
I've met her.
Yeah, the other...
And she's great, and she's very organized, so.
The piece with that is, um, Marlene is, took some hours from the admin assistant role to actually make the assistant town planner role, uh, double the hours. So instead of 20 hours a month, it's going to be 40 hours a month, and this person's also going to support the Conservation Commission.
Great.
So we'll have better communication and insight into CONCOM and this, so that's another, um, thing that, an outcome of, that happened in the last couple of weeks.
Congratulations, Janelle.
Yes, thank you for all your help.
Thank you. I will be here on the 14th though for town meeting, so I'm excited to, to be there in person for that.
Yes.
Thanks for all your help.
Yeah.
Read into the records, made part of the minutes, the planning board's appreciation for the service of Janelle Franklin, and our sincere hopes for all, for best success in the future.
Yes.
So always welcome to visit us anytime she comes north.
Yeah, she was a great, you know, I think, as our first assistant town planner, I think she has, the next person has big shoes to fill, so thank you, Janelle.
And when you come back and visit from Philadelphia, bring us some of that good old Philadelphia, what, cream cheese?
Here, it's always sunny.
Cheese steak. Come on, cheese steak.
Bring some really soggy cheese steak.
Yeah, they make it with, uh, yeah.
Two things, the cheesesteak and the pretzels, they probably won't survive the trip. Anyway.
With that...
Thank you, Janelle.
There you go.
John, John's coming in saying the pretzels are great. Alright, we don't have any April Minister approval. We'll have to work with Lori on getting those, uh, done and along with these meetings. And our next scheduled meeting is June 5th, as we said. Anything else? Otherwise, can I get a...
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned at 8:08.
Thanks, Janelle. Thank you, Janelle. Good luck.
Thanks, Janelle.